The budget meeting will start in one minute. Exactly at 2:00 P.M. The budget meeting will- We're not gonna have a quorum. June 3, 2025, Caddo Parish School Board Budget Work Session to order. We will have invocation and pledge by board member, Dr. Benita Dozart.
Will you bow your head, please? Thank you for standing. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all that you do for us. And the Lord, we're asking you to be in the midst of our meeting today. And let all that we do be acceptable and pleasing to you. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Dozart.
You're welcome.
I will now turn it over to Mr. Burton. I apologize. Before I turn it over to Mr. Burton, we have a roll call. When you have voted, please show the vote. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Starpe. Please note that Ms. Starpe has... Okay. We're gonna go ahead and confirm the agenda. Ms. Yates?
Move to confirm the agenda for the June 3, 2025, Caddo Parish School Board Budget Work Session.
We can't move.
Ms. Bell?
Second. Okay, I'm sorry.
We gotta help you Google. We gotta wait till Mr. Mail. Can somebody run?
We could just say not present at vote.
Okay.
Can she do that, Reggie?
Say not present at vote? Okay. Said no.
No.
Just wait.
You gotta have a quorum.
We don't have a quorum.
Not a quorum.
Mr. Mail has entered. We now have a quorum.
To vote.
Please vote.
I already voted. I thought I had already voted. I probably didn't.
Okay. Seven are present. We're now down to the visitor's section. The Caddo Parish School Board welcomes your input and comments regarding items that are on the special session agenda. If you would like to speak regarding an item on today's special session agenda, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, then make your remarks to the entire board. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. A time clock on the monitor screens will help you be aware of your time. When the time runs out, your time is up. It is the board's policy not to respond individually to members of the audience. When appropriate, the board may refer concerns to staff to be addressed. At this, as this is a public meeting, we ask you to refrain from referring to personnel by name or incident. In accordance with Caddo Parish School Board policies, derogatory statements about or directed at a school board member, any employee or any other person shall not be allowed. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. John Glover, 9100 Walker Road, Apartment 217, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71118. I rise to speak to... But what I'm going to do, though I'm bringing it to you all's attention, I sent, you all should have received a copy of an email that I sent to my board member. And I'm going to allow her, as much as she can, to address those issues that I brought forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
My name is Carl McDaniel. I live at 11236 Ridge Haven Drive, Keithville, Louisiana. Good afternoon, Superintendent, esteemed board members. My name is Carl McDaniel, as mentioned. I'm a proud teacher here in Caddo Parish, beginning my 22nd year. July 1, I will have the honor of beginning to serve as the newly-elected president of Caddo Federation of Teachers, as well, with Red River United. And I am ready to stand with and for the educators across our parish. Let me begin by sharing something that you might be able to relate to. Back in 2013, the Caddo Parish School Board changed how it calculates teacher pay. Instead of basing our salaries on the actual years of experience, we moved to a step system. At the time, teachers like me were placed on a step based on a rubric that frankly didn't match our actual years of service. For example, the rubric stated that I was placed on a step because at different times, one year would be, or two years would be part of one step. That reflected a lower number than my years of service. Initially, the same rubric was applied to any new teacher that came into Caddo from other districts, and it kept the system consistent. But that consistency ended at some point without notice or transparency. The district abandoned the rubric when employing new hires. They started placing new hires on a step that matched their total years of experience, not their step equivalent under the existing rubric. So now we have new teachers coming in, some with significantly fewer years in the classroom than me or my colleagues, yet they're placed on a higher step and are earning more money. For example, as I said, I'm beginning my 22nd year, but currently I'm listed as being on Step 17. So significant difference there. Those coming in with my same years of experience have been placed on the 22nd tier. That's not just unfair, it can be demoralizing for a lot of us. We've raised this with the district in the past, and despite the Finance Department's repeated denials, often relying on selective memory or misleading information, we know the truth, they know the truth. In fact, H.R. has created a spreadsheet showing the number of educators who've been harmed by the discrepancy. Now, to continue allowing this is not just an oversight, it is a choice. And as the author and activist James Baldwin once said, "Not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced." So to put it another way, when a wrong is known yet perpetuated, it's no longer a mistake, it's an injustice. And injustices have ripple effects. They erode trust, diminish morale, and ultimately the integrity of the profession that we all love. So as I step into my new leadership role, I promise you that I cannot let this issue be buried or brushed aside.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Hold on just a second. Did he say he was a part of an organization? Oh, you're president of a new organization, sir?
He's now the Caddo Federation President, under our umbrella of Red River United.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Listen, let me apologize. You were supposed, as an employee organization, you were supposed to get five minutes, and I cut you off. Did you wanna, do you wanna finish your statements? Yeah, I apologize. And I didn't, I caught that in the beginning and just remembered. So please, please forgive me, sir.
Oh, it's not a problem. But like, to reiterate, "As I step into my new leadership role, I cannot let this issue be buried or brushed aside, and I must continue fighting until we are all compensated fairly, not based on a flawed process, but based on the truth and our years in service." And that is all that I had to say. So thank you all.
Give me your name again, sir?
It is Carl McDaniel, or Carlos McDaniel.
And as you said, C.F.T., right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I remember the face and the beard. Hold on, you can say it in the, I apologize. There you go.
Y'all gave us kind of a, somewhat of a different rubric that accompanies what he was discussing. Could we have one of y'all get with him and explain that to him as well?
Thank you, Ms. McLean. Ms. Thomas?
Jordan Thomas, 1726 Line Avenue, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. I am now the president of Red River United. Good afternoon. We take this opportunity to express our agreement with administration that clear and transparent communication is key to moving forward to prevent division. That is why we once again come before you to express serious concerns regarding the proposed budget for the 2025-2026 school year. At the forefront of employees' minds is the absence of a pay raise, particularly troubling when it is public knowledge that $40 million is being set aside for potential future projects. Carl has already addressed the longstanding issues with the salary schedule, a problem that CPSB has been aware of for years. While it was stated in the previous budget meeting that the matter is not as straightforward as simply placing employees from other districts on higher-paying steps than your current employees back in 2018, I am here to tell you, from the information we have, it is that straightforward. In fact, employees, our members met with CPSB staff last summer to voice these concerns through a formal grievance process. They were promised they were heard, and that at least a partial resolution would be reflected in the 2025 budget. Then in January, the district implemented UKG, a costly timekeeping system with almost no communication to the very employees it affected. Instead of meeting with staff to explain the system, answer questions, provide training, many were just blindsided with threatening messages just days before the Christmas holidays, suggesting their jobs were at risk if they failed to comply. A grievance was filed, and once again, employees met with CPSB staff. Once again, they were promised their voices mattered. Once again, they are still waiting for meaningful change. Let me be clear. Your employees are sounding the alarm. They are asking to be a part of the process, but time and again, they are met with delayed responses and unfulfilled promises. The result? A frustrated workforce that files grievances, or worse, quietly walks away from the district altogether. You will not retain qualified, dedicated educators our students deserve unless the board and district leadership show that they truly value the people doing the work by communicating, by listening, by actively working with employees, and by honoring the promises made. I want you to know, we're not just here to criticize. We are here as a partner. You made commitments to your employees and the Red River United, the largest employee organization in this district, to fix the salary schedule, to resolve the UKG rollout issues, and to deliver a raise. We are asking you now, honor those commitments. Value your employees. Make the changes that will help Caddo Parish schools thrive. As always, we remain willing to collaborate with both the board and CPSB staff to correct these issues and find sustainable, effective solutions. Because we all do better, students, staff, and community, when we work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Visitor's section is closed. Mr. Burton?
Thank you, President Green. Members of the board, I'd now ask Mr. Howard, our Chief Financial Officer, if he would come and present information regarding our special revenue, capital projects, and debt service funds. Mr. Howard?
Good afternoon. The last, on last week's meeting, we talked about the general fund in detail. And as Mr. Burton just noted, we're gonna talk about capital projects, special revenue funds, and then debt service funds that are budgeted today. That's just an overview of what we're gonna talk about. Just to go over the general fund summary again, again, it is a balanced budget, which means our revenues equal or exceed expenditures. So it is a balanced budget without dipping into the fund balance or our savings account. And so we're pleased to do that on the first year post ESER. The revenues and expenditures are right at $426 million, with a small surplus, with an anticipated $162 million fund balance. When you look at special revenue funds, and the summary of these starts on page 29, there's a list of all the special revenue funds. The total of revenues would be a little over $87 million, as well as expenditures. It's showing a small deficit, but that's the nature of special revenue funds. Because as you'll see, that last column, there, we budget for the entire length of the grant, in many cases. And that's why it will say 2020 to 2027 in that budget column, with the anticipated fund balance of $11.1 million. These special revenue funds, what are they? They're legally restricted funds that are, they have to be used based on specific guidelines. They're, most of them are from federal, or some from state sources. Some examples are the, not, the Caddo Educational Excellence Fund, not the CEIF Trust, but the CEIF Operating Account, which is the earnings from that CEIF Trust that we use each year to supply our teachers with $200 that is available for them to spend on materials and supplies. The Child Nutrition Fund, IDEA or Special Ed Fund, and then Title 1, 2, 3, 4. Those are just some examples of the many, many funds that are included in special revenue. And as noted, the ESER expired in 2425, so this is our first full-year's budget without any effects of ESER included. Capital project funds. And those start on, I think, page 99 in the budget. We're budgeting $32.7 million of revenues and expenditures, with an anticipated fund balance of $11.2 million. Now, that $32.7 million includes the regular capital projects millage, which is a little over 11 mills, as well as the capital projects portion of the five mills that is for debt millage. That, if you'll remember, the voters approved several years ago, that five-mill debt service millage for, and part of that for capital projects was HVAC replacement at many of our school sites and district locations. Then the debt service fund summary, budgeted $11.9 million in revenue and $11.1 in expenditures, with anticipated fund balance of $14.4 at the end of the year. Now, that may look, that's probably artificially high. We have a, one of our big debt service payments is due, we pay those a couple of times a year, due not long after the June 30 year-end. Our next steps are, we'll be available to answer questions, of course, from any board members today and between now and June 17, when the, there's a public hearing and the budget will be adopted at the board meeting. Also, the budget is available as a hard copy in the Finance Department for anyone who may want to come by and review it, and it's also available online. And with that, we'll take any of your questions.
Okay. Ms. Bell?
Okay, Ms., okay. Okay, I have a couple things to say and ask, okay? Number one, I really took some time to look at this budget, a couple of days, because I'm here about, we need a raise, we need this and that and that. And my main thing is the raise, regardless of what. We gonna try to see what we can do for a raise. But then I looked at the budget, board members. And I'm gonna be honest, maybe I'm off a little bit. I'm not good with math, but I'm good with numbers, counting. And I'm looking at this special, the one you're talking about, special revenue? Do y'all know this? If it wasn't for the federal grants, we would be in a turbishape. I counted 56 federal grants was keeping Caddo Parish open. I counted seven state grants from the state. And you know for yourself, that's happening. As for the federal grants, when you close our 99 Job Corps Centers, they can hit us anytime they want. So I decided to look and see now, what, and I called Jeff about it. When I looked at the 56 federal grants, and it takes care of everything for our students, if we lose any of these grants, it gonna hurt us. These are federal grants, not ours. Then I looked at the fact, and I'm gonna ask you, the reason I'm saying this, because I need to add some quote. Then I looked at our local sources. I'm telling you, weren't for the taxes, we would be messed up still, the local. Because we can't handle it. Because you know how it is when you're asking for money. And I'm thinking, if they took away these 56 federal grants from us, and the federal grants take care of everything, Title 1, our babies, and anything we want, Special Ed. And then I looked at the seven local, I mean state. And y'all know about the state? You know, they written, I'm saying, why I wanna ask you this? About one of those grants, it was dealing with early childhood education. The state give us $2,800,000. Am I wrong? Now, give me straight. They give us $2 million, 200, turn on page.
Yes, ma'am.
32.
Right.
That only come from the state. If we did not get that money, could we have child, could we do early childhood education? And that's for Superintendent and for you, Jeff.
I mean, that would severely limit our ability to provide, to provide that to the extent that we provide it currently, I would say that. We would have to look at and re-figure the way we wanted to accomplish that. And I can't say we couldn't do it, but...
And that's the only funds come from the state with that, right? Oh, I'm just saying.
That's from, that's from...
Fund, early childhood education fund?
Federal.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the state source. Look on page 32.
What page are you on?
32. $2,800, $2,800. And it's 20, as you, I mean, 2020.
Yeah, there's a couple different ones for early childhood.
Okay, 32. That's what I was looking at. And it says state.
There's some state grants.
Yeah, the DHH.
And together, those are together, or what?
Right. The DHH would be the, what other page is it on?
Okay, only 32 was I have a question about. Okay, that? All right. Okay, then I wanted to ask you about, go to page 39. And that's for the CCAP V3 seats. And the state give us like $1,764, okay? I'm just looking at the fact that, I'm looking, and like I said, I didn't count. May you count better than me. I only counted seven. You may have more coming from the state. Then I'm looking at 56 grants, okay? You may have more coming from the state, then I'm looking at 56 grants, okay? So I'm just saying, my concern is this now, okay, here's another one. Go to page 66. Tell me to stop the school violent program. This federal government gives 172,400, what we use that for? Stop the violent program?
Is Mr. Gibbs?
Go to, oh, I'm sorry, go to 66, y'all, I'm sorry, page 66. I'm going to, page 67, take my time, 66. And I'm, the actual, in 2023 is 172, now it's 1744,794. I just want to know.
And I don't, and I don't think anything is budgeted for that, for, for this current year, Ms. Bell.
Oh, okay. But that's for stop the violence, dealing with, that's dealing with different things, they're dealing with, um.
School violence, right.
Security and all that kind of stuff?
Right.
Yeah, okay. Okay, the reason I asked though, I'm using some of those, and I'm looking, is that I'm looking at the grants that we've received, and I thank, I thank the Lord, I do, for the ones who write these grants and for y'all get these grants. I really, I appreciate that, because I'm looking at the system. If we didn't have these grants, it would be tough. Now, we talking about the 40, I mean, that building, and these buildings are old buildings, like I told them the other day, I graduated from Warden Hill in the same cafeteria and auditorium, so I know it's old. Eventually, it ain't gonna last too long, I know. And I'm looking at all these grants, and then I look at the money, the general fund money. If it wasn't for some of these grants, we wouldn't be making, we wouldn't be able, y'all, to do what we need to do for these babies. I'm just being honest with you. And as we, and it's like, no, we never know what gonna happen. The biggest thing I heard this weekend when they said close down Job Corps, that's federal, it can come to us any day. So I'm just saying, I just wanted to make sure that y'all understand that federal grants are helping us to make it.
And if I could make a comment?
Yes, you can.
Just yesterday, President Trump released, not a detailed budget, but an outline of what the Department of Education budget will, will look like. Now, that's, it still has to go through the reconciliation process with the House and the Senate and all, so we don't know what, anywhere, we're not anywhere close to knowing what the final form will look like, but the intent is to, to combine a lot of these smaller grants, Title II, III, IV, some of those, at the state level, and just give an amount of money to the states and say, you deal with it, you dole it out, but we've not seen anything that says that our Title I funds are gonna be, be decreased, or our IDEA funds or, or any effect on C and P, we've not seen any of that yet, so.
And if he do that, and then he get out, and then you got, we only getting seven state grants now, that mean, you gotta divide it between 64 parishes. So, and I, I want everybody to understand this, I want a susten, I want a raise, I don't care what it take, we got to get a raise within it, at least before I get off the board level, and, I mean, a year and a half. That's what I'm looking at, I don't care what nobody thing, talk about me and do, put me on front page of the paper. My point is that we got to give a raise. Everything else to me, I'm saying the raise got to be where these people can understand education is important, and that's what I'm after, and that's when I looked at, when I looked at these grants, I said, God, leave, if we drop these grants, we gone. Okay, I'm finished, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Ms. Yates?
I just have a quick question. On the grants Ms. Bell is talking about, are they restricted?
Yes, they're restricted, they're all, they all have specific guidelines as to what they can, the funds can be spent on.
So none of them can be used for salaries?
Some can be used for salaries, and we have a lot of salaries in various grants.
Okay. Thank you.
For example, if you have a, and I taught Title I my first four years, and we, I was paid out of Title I grant, you see what I'm saying? So that mean, if we're paying so many teachers that are Title I grant, and they stopped Title I, that mean, that's it. That mean those teachers gotta, what, go home and find a job, right? That's what they told us.
Find another spot.
Several years ago, when I taught, I was paid out of the Title I grant.
Yeah, and many of our additional teachers that, that we are hiring to implement the block scheduling in our high schools are being funded through Title I.
They gonna be Title I, that's it. Okay, that's, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Ms. McLean?
Thank you, Madam President. Okay, I'm gonna ask a few clarifying questions first, just to make sure I understand everything and make sure the audience does as well. Why are we budgeting from 2020 to 2027? Why those numbers specifically?
Because that, we, we have to budget for the life of the grant, and many of these grants are, are two, three, four, five years, and so, that, that column is, is budgeting for the, the life of the grant. All of these, some of these say Title I, maybe year to year, but the, and I don't know example right off, but many of them are, you know, you have four years to spend this money, and so we budget for the life of the grant, and so that's why it looks like it.
So then, with these, if it was a four-year one, would you take the entire grant and just divide it by four, and that's what you're doling out annually, or is it a little more nuanced than that?
Not, not, yeah, not necessarily.
Okay, okay. Um, all right, and then, on, on child nutrition programs, we've got 22,400,000, are those from our rebates for the providing free school lunches? Is that what that is?
Well, the revenue, just about all of the revenue for, for C and P comes from the, the money that we get from the government per, per meal, we get an amount per meal that we provide to our kids, and then the expenses obviously are the cost of the food and paying the employees.
Okay, so I guess, what would the total amount that we're getting be there for child nutrition programs?
Yeah, but, do you know the pays number for that? So the revenue would be 21.9 million from, as reimbursements? 21,947?
Okay, and then the total expenditures are just slightly under that?
Right, slightly, yeah, slightly over that and slightly under the total revenue.
Okay, I see. Okay, and that does have to do with the rebating?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And then No Kid Hungry is 2024, if you go down a ways, is that, is that an example of one that has expired?
What page is that on?
It wasn't very much, I'm, so I'm just looking at, if you go back to page 29, where we have all these expenditures, we no longer have an expenditure on No Kid Hungry, 2024?
Yes, that's one that's expired.
Okay. Okay. And I thought that we were completely done with our ESERS, but I see that there is 64,000 on one of them.
That is a revision from prior year, as we said, that, that column is the life of the, of the grant, and so that's a revision from prior year, that's not, nothing for this year.
To where it starts, 2020 to 2027.
Okay, okay. All right, and then I had one of my most dedicated constituents ask me some questions, and some of them, I would like to get the answers on. What is Carl Perkins? What do they do? What's that grant?
Carl Perkins.
That supports our career in technical education.
Okay, so that would be like VOTEC training? Okay, okay. Let's see, what else was it? The MFP on page nine, so going back in the budget a bit, I believe that this is accounting for our projected loss of students, but could you clarify on that, on line 19?
Yes, we're budgeting for a 750 student loss.
Okay.
Which is consistent with the average of the last several years.
Okay.
At $5,500 per student.
Okay, and then on 22, line 22 of this same page, what would be non-public school materials? What is considered non-public school materials?
For our private schools, there's an amount that, that comes from the state that flows through us, they send us the bills for reimbursement, we have, we, we reimburse them.
For private schools?
Like, for textbooks, for private schools.
Okay, so we give textbooks to private schools?
We get an alloc, they get an allocation, and the funds come through us, and we reimburse them.
Is it just any private school?
Uh, any private school, I think, do all of our private schools?
No, everyone.
Yeah, they have.
It may have first class.
Yeah, they have, there's an approval process from the state, but I think any, any are, you know, eligible to, to apply for it.
Okay, okay. Um, let's see, I think there was one more thing I was going to address. I think actually that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLean, Ms. Tramell?
Okay, thank you, Madam President. I almost call you Mr. Lee, and I don't know where. I'm like, well, Mr. Lee, oh, yeah, and I have a flashback. Look, I'm, I'd like to know, we talk about raises, and it was, as we heard earlier, again, with the $40 million, do we have funds anywhere that we can, do we have funds anywhere that we can foresee a potential raise, anywhere?
The, as I stated last week, that the first step in us being able to give a substantial permanent raise.
Permanent, okay.
Is to achieve a balanced budget without ESER funds, and we've done that, so, but that was the first step, and we're, we're not there today.
Okay, but with the great balance that we have, that doesn't look too.
Well, that's a, that's one-time funds.
Okay, that's one time, okay. All right.
And, Mr. Howard, would you just clarify again for everyone, the cost of providing a 5% raise across the board to all staff, which is our target, if we were able to provide a 5% raise, what is that that we are aspiring to?
5% raise on a $200 million payroll would be about, including your retirement cost, would be about 12 and a half million dollars.
12?
12 and a half million dollars.
12. And that's for?
That would be an ongoing permanent raise, percentage pay raise, 5%, pay raise.
Okay. Now, are we?
And if you divide 12 million into 40, it's not gonna last very long, so that's why we would not ever look at considering.
Okay, well, this, this is another question that I'm looking at. Do we ever save with building, repairs, air conditioning, do we do, we save any money in those areas?
Do we, do we ever save any?
You know, like, I know at my house, you know, sometime I end up and I look, oh, and there's $100, and, you know, I pretty soon have nothing but a drop in the bucket, but what I'm saying, do we ever have money that we can roll over into a fund to be used to start?
We'll have savings in various accounts, in, in, you know, in various years, but then we'll have some accounts that, that, you know, maintenance funds may be over, and transportation funds that, you know, where we're repairing our buses may be, may be under, so.
You have to roll that money into.
Yeah, so, you, you have to look at, take it all as, as one fund, one general fund, and we've, you know, so, and just in recent years have we had those large surpluses, and those are because of ESER, and that's well documented that because of the.
I mean, but we're back to normal now.
We're back to normal now.
So we have to figure out other ways.
Right.
So, but we are looking, I know that Superintendent is, because he's made the statement that he's looking forward to finding a way, and at 5%, sometimes you might not be able to do 5. Mr. Superintendent?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so, uh-huh.
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, so, I'm, a raise is a raise. Okay, so we'll look at that, and then, I had something about Act One, but I can't tell you what it was for, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Tramell. Dr. Dozard?
Thank you, Madam President. P you back off of Board Member Tramell, I thought about, what about our oil and gas royalties? That, that, we don't have much coming in from that?
We're gonna bring in about 800,000 this year from oil and gas. That number was up at 2, 3, 4 million a few years ago, it's, it's gone down a lot, and it's trending down. The, the, our biggest source of oil and gas royalties is from the, the property, the old Carver School that's way out Elbe Road, and.
I used to work there.
Okay, okay, you know, where's that then?
I've worked at 12 high schools and, schools combined, six middle school and six high schools.
Right.
I'm quite familiar.
Right, and so as those wells get older, then the production, you know, gets lower, and so we're seeing reduced revenues in those.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dozard. Okay, I guess since no one's on the board, I guess my 30-minute questions can start. Um, that music program, what's it looking like this year, Mr. Burton?
We've, we've done lots of things around improving the music program. One of the first things that we did is we called in representatives who were band leaders, band directors, walked through what are the, what are their needs, what are we doing that's working well, what are the things that's not. One of the things they talked to us about is some savings we could incur if we changed the way that we adjusted repairing instruments, and, and instead of outsourcing all of that, how could we do that? We've written a grant, as you know, to be able to, to add additional instruments to schools. We've increased, as you can see in, in the budget for music programs, and we are continuing professional development. One of the things that was, was fought hard for was the music curriculum. Many times that was debated on whether that was needed or not, and we all said that that was vital, so music education is definitely a priority. We know it's something that many of you, and especially you, President Green, want, and want us to put more light on, and, and we're willing to, to do that, and I think we have in this budget.
Okay. Well, I guess I could say a whole lot, but, um, just know when we, when we hear about all these kids getting band scholarships and things like that, that a lot of times our band directors and our music teachers are working with instruments that are just above, you know, uh, just above, just above something we call an instrument. And then they're asking to be, they're asking to compete with people who spend thousands of dollars on the instruments, and we still sound pretty decent, I said, I think that says a lot for Caddo. But when you think about, we can sound so much better if we put, I'm not saying put all our money towards the, the instruments or whatever, but just a little bit more, and I'm appreciative of what's been done, I just want us to give that big push. And if no one else has anything else to say, no one else is on the board, Ms. Tramell?
Call to a joint?
Call to a joint, do I have a second?
Yes.
Ms. Bell? Ms. Bell?
Second.
All righty. It's been moved in second. Have a great day.
All right, thank you. We gotta vote in.
Okay.
So, we gotta vote, we gotta vote.
Very good.
Make sure you vote, make sure you vote.
Got you. Fine. Katie, she wanna talk? You the one, you the one?
Okay.
Two. Bang.